I'm going to work here on the frontier right now. Wild frontier.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, like Cincinnati Council of Work session. It's called the Week in Order. And jump right into the agenda. This week we have a funding request. And before we talk about those, for me and you, there may be a new face in the crowd. And we'd like to introduce to you a homegrown local person, Seth Koki, Jake Adams, who is on deck to be our youngest director when Gary retires. And that's important if you want to say anything, welcome. And be sure to press that button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, Jake Adams, I know I've worked with a few of you over the years, my time previously with the BRRA, but I just wanted to say I'm very excited for this opportunity to step in here with the city and try to follow Gary's footsteps. He's done some great work for the city over the years. So really tried to come in and hit the ground running this week, try to absorb as much as I can from him. He's obviously wealth of information. But again, just thanks for the opportunity and I look forward to working with him.
Jake, welcome. Glad you're here. And a special thank you as we get started to Jamie and Ethan Strout for getting all the electronics. Hopefully those who are tuning in via Zoom can hear or follow along. If you have any problems, you can call me at 570-3485 and let us know what issue you may have. We'll try to work with that. But I think everybody should be working properly. So thank you all. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For another one, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda tonight is the funding request for agencies. The packet that you received and the budget that was initially prepared did contain a funding for all of the agencies that we fund and is provided by Gary's school as a council. However, things have changed over the last several weeks. Based on that, I did update that in the last two years, based on that, and COVID-19 coming out, we really feel like, I feel like very definitely we need to take some actions here to reduce as much as possible our spending at this time for the next fiscal year. Thus, what I've done in this particular, I recommend to you to study for tonight, further studies in our work session, is I recommend a 10% cut in 2021 to all discretionary agencies, except Fine Arts and Rockridge, the Lionkill view. And then, as those two receive a dollar of a dollar grant, we have to match the way money is given. And if we do not match that grant, we will not receive those dollars. The second thing I wanted to note was that if you look at the categories that are not discretionary, there are some agencies in there, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, the Non-One Dispatch Center, and the Blue Ridge Regional Jail, where we can affect, that is the ministry records and analysis of myself, regionally, that that changes in those budgets. And so rather than trying to do anything more in that regard, we're going to keep pushing on those budgets to see what we can save some dollars in the next fiscal year. Finally, then we have other agencies that are funded by regional agreements, such as tourism, a library, a number of other agencies of that nature, A straight rest and where we're asked the best thing to do is start having conversations and conversations with them and find out how they can help or assist us as we try to prepare the community for this guest this fiscal year and the real likelihood of significant competitive shortages that could develop. So that's what we've been providing to you this evening. If you have time, we'll sit once ahead and sit down in our work sessions to further discuss and study this issue. Of course, one of the things we hope to do is further refine revenue estimates for FY21. I will show you a number of documents that just came out of that 24 hours from the end of the year, Virginia First Cities, and session, federal reserve representative from Richmond was in Harrisonburg yesterday. So we're getting a little information, starting to trickle down as to what we might expect to see in the fiscal year coming up. And so things are still uncertain, but I recommend changes, options in revenue spending in place so that in the year to come, we don't get caught too short because some of these estimates that Gary and I have developed have already been far surpassed by some of the estimates that just come in the last 24 hours. Any other questions or any questions to come?
The two organizations where you're recommending essentially level of funding, has any interaction occurred with their executive directors understand if any of the programs that they normally put on may not happen this summer? Fair, well, the summer fair program, if it's unable to occur, or Peter Abadkill, last year, three of their shows occurred toward June 10th, and right now, they're currently under orders until June 10th. And just to ask them if they feel that any of their operational costs or operations will be affected by this because it's just prudent to know that. And yes, I realize there's a match, but one could make a case that money, which is some of the other nonprofits that help people as opposed to provide entertainment, might do way more to the community than a one-to-one match.
Respectful. I have now reached out to them. I think you can do that, of course. I appreciate the comment and appreciate what you're saying about maybe these are not private organization funded. It's a different point of view and a view and a constant discussion with the fund in the future, but I'll look into that question.
Well, it gives us like two different spreadsheets on numbers. So on the, on I guess this, does the funding listed for some of these discretionary agencies? That's not your recommendation for the budget, is it?
You received, I believe, I believe you received the new memo today, tonight. And we just finished that. I guess that was later in the paper. We just finished that today for the last 24 hours. So my apologies, but based on what we knew with the budget together last, or not budget, the agenda package of last week, and based on the investment we're now putting in place, we just feel like, I felt like I needed to make some changes to prepare us for maybe not the worst case scenario, middle road scenario, where we could actually see revenue losses last year, next year, hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'll remind myself here, what else did, this is the beginning of our budget meetings and budget discussions. So we're not making any decisions tonight. Been talking about ideas, looking at how to bridge the gap in 2021, not knowing what 2021 is going to look like. This year, we all know that we have an even greater cloud on the horizon in front of us. Any other questions that the council had?
Just to clear on this end, between all the documents lying around, what you just recommended was no funding for Lionkill Fair, the 10% donation, and all the other discretionary agencies that we have to fund.
That is correct. Any other questions? Take a minute to absorb the latest document. Much like the federal government and Secretary of Defense, until four o'clock this morning, working on positive budget numbers.
Again, my suggestion to contact those organizations, it's echoed by the rest of the council, then I, then I think you should do that. If I'm the only one that requests that conversation to take place, again, looking at our potentially getting a 10% cut and all the good that they do in the community, I just feel it's prudent that we evaluate treating each of them the same.
Well, it is an important message to the community that we are making cuts and so these agencies will be community support to make up the difference. So they provide services that the community can do.
Councilmember, here's to your question. I will look at and discuss with those two agencies what their thoughts are, start programming, because it occurs to me that it might be part of the planning department that actually provides a certain number of activities and programs a year. So I would want to look into that as well, just to be sure we're not funding something that's not going to exist, not going to be funded from the other sources outside of the community. I'm trying to, what was the process by which, okay, we started off with level funding, then all of them had, then it went to zero funding. So the document that went out last week recommended all the dollar signs, the blank spaces, that was just for interpretation? I had to have to get it back on my desk. Okay, I have it for you. Remember, the discretionary. The money was in the budget, which had been put together several weeks prior to the agenda. When the agenda came out, it did have a number of formations to make a recommendation one way or the other. So as the member noted, or briefly noted, they will basically level funding. Jim, can I ask the 10% of the 10% percentage, how was that derived? Did you feel that that's what we recently asked for the outside agencies or were critical? Are you counting also looking at these agencies and asking for that percentage? Was the combination, I felt it was a starting point. I've seen against some estimates in the last day and a half, which do indicate we suffer a greater than 10% revenue loss in many of our core revenue streams, but 20% or 30% seemed like too much asked for. And I did discuss with Rockridge and they're looking at 10% as well. Start with, and I, were some of these agencies having more? I wouldn't say all of them, but I have to say I appreciate the uniformity I think it comes. So many of these agencies, they can put up with both topics on the same page.
You know, recognizing this as a work session, and only a work session if no decisions are made. Here it's April 1st, and budget doesn't go into effect till July 1st. I also appreciate the 10%. And I also just think that it's in the interest of full disclosure that that's a starting point, and it could go a greater cut, or it could be less than that. We don't know. We don't know what else the budget holds for the public evaluating, watching us, what we're talking about as a 10% cut equates to, am I correct, $6,000?
Correct.
So if we're talking about a drastic pull in our city budget that is tens of millions, well, our budget is tens of millions. And if we're talking about cuts to the revenue streams of 5, 10, 4% sales tax, logic, fields, $6,000 to some of these organizations is a drop in the bucket. And that's why it's only prudent in the interest of a full disclosure that it could be 10, it could be 20. It's only fair that we say that. We hope that it's not, that these budgets are, for the nonprofits are also put together, they're documents for next fiscal year. And it's only fair that we are upfront showing dollar cards.
I would have to say though, that a drop in the bucket, you know, for $6,000 is a drop in the bucket for our budget. But for some of these agencies, $6,000 is a huge amount of money. So we really need to keep that in mind, particularly at a time when these agencies are going to have difficulty doing outside fundraising to make a law. So I hear what you're saying, but I think we also have to consider if these are our regional partners and maybe a lot for our community. So.
Correct. And that $6,000 is in total shared by these 20 organizations. So that's a $200 cut here, a $400 cut here. None of these organizations are, we're talking about losing $6,000. We're talking about them losing $100 or $200 or $1,200 from the city of Lexington. So that, again, is the last thing that any of us want to do. We've spent over the years without them on council, more time talking about these agencies than anything in the budget. But given the landscape, given the landscape, when we have employees in the city and we have police services providing fire and rescue, everything has to be evaluated and in the full disclosure, it could be 10, it could be more. And that's, that's all I'm sharing, putting it out there as one person's opinion. I think second, a long process to go in the budget. So.
So with the cuts that we are considering on the agency request, are you going to consider additional cuts in the rest of the budget?
Absolutely. We've already with Harris Link and Peter Shatkeen put in place about $400,000 now as cuts this year and into next year. Just to get close to balancing the budget, I bet, as I believe this next year, the starting point is about $600,000 or we're still at $400,000, what is it, $5,000? For next year, this year over $400,000 already from our internal departments. From a historical perspective, I'm telling you.
I just wanted to say, so the numbers that we have in this document, those will change?
The budget you've received just will have to change very rapidly. Everything that you reviewed prior to tonight is all different. In aerial detail, the changes on our budget here and then progress, I'd say from a historical perspective, I wish, David, remembering that we have spent quite a bit of time talking about agency requests that would seem a little way, question whether or not we should fund outside agencies. These are all wonderful organizations that do great work in our community, but is it the role of government to fund them and support them with funding, I should say? And again, the reality is that we may be faced with the circumstance of not being able to fund them in 2021. Right now, the city managers is recommending a 10% decline. But the reality is it may be the work of council to choose to not fund any of them or just fund some of them that provide the basic services of food, shelter, things of that nature. But again, this is just the first item of the apple of this process. And unless there are any other questions for the city manager, what agency piece guarantees and jump into the operating? Any other questions? Gary, come on down. Joe, so you've chucked the message. Well, I was going to ask Gary to start out with the presentation on the school budget. The school superintendent could not be here tonight, and Gary's going to present that. And then we'll answer a little more detail on the budget in general. And perhaps for the rest of the council, it's certainly for me, if you can guide in on the stack of papers we have that we should refer to in this conversation. But I didn't realize the document was sitting here on the last discussion. So give us, give us a surprise.
Okay, I'm going to be presenting from the PowerPoint presentation that's at your seat, which has been updated by the school superintendent. And the numbers that are in the documents that will be discussed tonight are revised and updated from ones in the original budget proposal submitted to you by the city manager on March 23rd. That being said, however, the priorities that were included in the school budget haven't really changed during that time period. What has changed is that the state of Virginia has updated the revenue estimates for school systems. But we all know that the projected shortfall in the Commonwealth's budget, that those will change when the General Assembly comes back in session later this month. And could conceivably change throughout the state's fiscal year, depending upon economic reality. But if, but if you turn to the first page, that's entitled, "Overhear the Lexington City Schools," you'll see that superintendent is reporting that there are 342 students at the elementary school, 170 at the middle school, and 160 Lexington students at the joint high school. The school system employs 47 employees at the elementary school, 27 at the Lurin Downs, and eight employees on the division level. What has been included in the school budget this year? One of their priorities is to competitively pay your staff. So the superintendent reports that they are competing in all positions, and the proposed budget includes the 1% plus the staff, which equates to a total of a 2% raise for all school employees. The costs associated with that pay increase is $87,088. Now, I think it's important to note that the recent budget enacted by the General Assembly stipulates that there is to be 4% increase in teacher pay over the binding period, that is fiscal year 2021 and 2122, in order to get full funding from the state. So if the city elects and maxes proposed budget with a 2% increase this year, then to get the full funding, the school system would need to do another 2% increase next year to get that maximum reimbursement from the state. The second priority for the school is to be, continue to be.
Gary, if I can, just a quick question. In the case of the cost of $87,088, the 2% pay increase and the staff equates to 3%?
No, no. It's a 1% plus a staff, which totals 2%, the cost of which is maybe $7,000.
Does that maybe $7,000, is that all local funds, or does that include the mansion from the state?
That is the total cost, and the cost that would enable them to get more revenue from the state than just what the city be picking up is those, the pay increases for the non, I'm looking for the right term, SOQs is what the state funds. So there would be some support decisions that the state doesn't support, and we have to pick up the cost. But the majority of that extra cost should flow back from the state under current guidelines.
And the building, though, has not, of course, signed the budget and also anticipated changes to the budget. So all we can do is work off of what is currently been passed by the House and, you know, set.
That's the best numbers we have at this point, but I think I'd be reconciling, Jim's my recommendation, council is, let's don't count too heavily on those additional funds. We may well get this pay increase, but all the extra money that is in the school board's revised budget, in the budget that we originally submitted to you, we may not be able to count on that. If we do get that, then we'll have additional savings from the schools that will help the state's budget, probably premature to count on that extra revenue. Moving on to the second priority of the school system, and that is to continue strong employee benefit programs. The original submitted budget included a 5% estimate on health insurance. Thankfully, we had revised numbers on local toys, and our actual increase in health premiums only be 1.1%. So the revised cost of that is just a little bit less than $4,000 for the school system. The VRFs, the Particular Retirement System, contribution rate for both the schools and, I might say for the city, are both increasing. The school's going up approximately 1% to a total of 16.62%. And you can say that that carries with it a significant cost, $47,710. Another priority of the school board and superintendent is enhancing technology capabilities. And they are including a full-time. and they are including a full-time division, instructional technology, resource, teacher in their budget. The state is requiring a position for one, wherever one thousand students. Honestly, we don't have a thousand students in our school, but rather than recommend a part-time position, which might be hard to improve and contain, they are adding that in the budget. And I might note for your benefit that they actually had a previously, a one that did a lot of work in this arena, and that first Lexington school system last spring. But the cost of that position is seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven They also are adding a small amount of money, that is, an additional twenty-five hundred dollars for landscaping grounds. You might say, well, why would they want to do that? Public works would use when they could get inmates from the jail to do the seasonal work such as queuing. And it's probably not the best idea to have inmates on school property on schools' building station. Not problematic necessarily during the summer, but during spring and fall when schools are in session, the schools would prefer to contract that staff rather than have the previous arrangement.
Quick question, on the other technology decision, does that number include benefits and presumed VRS contribution?
Yes, I believe that the cost that she's identified here is fringe benefits and everything. And then I think it would be no more thing to understand how many students Lexington has at the high school. That would be estimated at, or I guess the actual has been a hundred and sixty, which on that basis, that means that our school system has to pay for sixteen point six three percent of operating cost of the high school. And I'm going to refer to it as revised budget, anticipates the contribution level remaining at that same level, whereas actual payments next year will be dependent, I believe, on the actual student population. While we're talking about this high school, the next slide talks about the project resource, which is planned for this spring and the summer, at a cost of a hundred and eighty thousand. Our proportion of that cost would be nearly thirty thousand. If you go back and look at last year's CIP budget, you'll find that the cost that was anticipated at that point, our share would have been twenty thousand. So if they carry out this project, it's going to cost about ten thousand dollars more for us than we originally expected. Now, we wish we knew what was going to be in the high school's capital plan for the next five years. What we included in our CIP budget was just a carry forward of those projects and those costs and the levels that were given us more than a year ago by the county school system. But as you can see from Rebecca's slide, that county school faculty study is expected to be presented this month sometime. We would hope that it stays on track. The next slide, I think, is information you already know, we don't need to spend much time, we already appropriated fifty-two thousand previously out of their reserves for those three projects at Wadell, but there's no, that has no budget impact, because that's money that's already appropriated out of the service. Now, that being said, it doesn't fund all of the things that perhaps we needed in school, but it funds, in the superintendent and the school board's opinion, those most critical things. What's not included in the proposed budget? There had been an ask for an additional halftime custodian for the elementary school here. Had they included that, I would have had a cost of twenty thousand dollars. There was a ask for, and I'll also say again here for the elementary school, which would have had a twenty thousand dollar cost. They looked at the possibility of person, some human resource software that would track cabinets and so forth. That would have had an initial cost of four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars with a recurring annual cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. They would have liked to have had funds to redesign the school division website. So the bottom line is, the superintendent has presented to the school board, and they've adopted and recommended to the city, the things that they consider the highest priority, but not all the things that would have been nice or that would like to happen. So to summarize, their FY twenty-one revised budget is seven million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which represents a three point one percent overall increase from the current date through the budget. That budget is built on the projected average daily student count of six hundred and fifty-six. Their expected increase in state revenues in the amount of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-three dollars. That's for next year compared to fiscal year twenty, which would represent a five point one percent increase. And if that indeed is funded by the state, go along with it in supporting the salary, VRS, and projected health insurance increase. The local contribution in this revised budget is adopted with the three thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars, two hundred and seven, three million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, I'll call it done, which would be an increase of just under one percent, or twenty-nine thousand, six fifty-five, the increase from last year's budget. That number that I've just cited includes fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars for housing cards, which previously was in the city's budget as part of the place department. So that's really just a shift from one budget to the other. So Rebecca is noting for your benefit that that increase from the city that's being asked for would fund nineteen percent of that new technology establishment. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks, see what questions you have. I hope I know the answers. I apologize that you've got to get, have a big team here presenting the school budget and don't have the school superintendent. Any questions?
I was counting out questions. Gary, just curious, the six fifty-six is sixteen less than current level, is there? I appreciate the, you know, discounts of number of students, but I was curious, does any benefit to the madness?
I haven't dealt into the exact numbers with the school superintendent. Usually what they do is look at the progression of students through the grades and then make some estimate of what's coming into kindergarten classes. And I would rather suspect that they may have taken just a week at a conservative approach. I know there was a dialogue at one point, a range of maybe four or more, so. But if you need additional information, I'll try to get that. I guess my caution would be, if you err on that number, you want to err on the low side because that's what brought state revenues. So if you check that number too high, and you come on state revenue, you don't have those students, and you're going to end up behind the eight hole. If you budget a little bit on the low side, you have the extra students and get additional state money, you don't end up with the deficit in your budget.
And Gary, I guess, looking at six hundred and fifty-six students instead of six hundred and seventy or something to that effect, the governor, one of them takes out his eraser a little bit and edits the budget until now that when he signs it, less state funds or raises or whatever might be. You've got a little room there if you might have more students in a sense with the first year, I guess, but wait a moment. But Gary, thank you really for the overview and the handout from the superintendent. Very easy to understand and very clear, thank you.
If I could, I might make one additional comment, and this, in a way, doesn't have anything to do with FY twenty-one budget, but again, on the other hand, it really has everything to do with FY twenty-one budget. School's not in session now, so the city manager has been asking the school superintendent, just as he's been asking all the rest of us, to find ways that we can save money for this year's budget. The best estimate we have right at this moment for the schools is ninety-two thousand dollars savings this year. It's going to be a recommendation of staff that, rather than pull those funds back to the general fund this year, that council consider allowing those to stay in the school fund, but us reducing our funding to the schools by that same amount next year. So I thought it was important that you should know that as your funding school budget. Thank you.
One last quick question. The bill that was signed into law a week or so ago included a thirty billion dollars for education stabilization funds, of which I think fourteen was for higher education and sixteen million I thought was for K through twelve. Are there any projections yet on the, on that money? I think it goes to the state and then is appropriated, K through twelve students. Have any inkling of what that will mean?
Not yet. That's correct, Shane, our heads of health with public, we can't see a shake in heads.
Is that Gary?
Is my video?
Coherence, overview, and proper working with our students, sort of trying to tell if cancellation or stoppage of school attendance.
Yes, sir. I want to start making some general comments about budget, and it was a great budget together by the Harris Link and leadership team. It took about twelve weeks just before Christmas to put this together. Ten of those weeks or eleven of those weeks actually were under normal conditions, the last ten days prior to March twenty-third, COVID nineteen was ugly ahead. Since that time, we've determined that it's a great plan for spending revenues we no longer have. So unfortunately, we've not changed much of that budget. What we know since then is meals and lodging taxes have been immediately impacted by COVID nineteen. We're also losing a few tail expenditures and sales taxes, and likely next spring we'll lose people, professional and professional businesses and taxes as well as some canceled on. So the budget's being, will have the closest printout that you've been presented with, and programs, activities, expenditures, community, priorities will have to be carried by us. Budget as opposed to tax increases in, I have changed my recommendations, and I'm looking at at least one tax implemented. We do need new revenue sources, that was true before COVID nineteen, but it's even more today, as some of the revenue resources that we rely on in the past just cannot rely in coming here and maybe several years to come, and we're going to have to do that. The overall fiscal health of the city is really a bit of a positive, however, we do have this challenge of COVID nineteen, and as you all know, we've all been battling trying to put together enough dollars to deal with the infrastructure needs that we have in the city that need to be addressed. Some of those unfortunately also we put off now. So it's essentially, the budget we've been proposed, no increase in the cost of the health fund budget, whether nineteen thousand, you have nineteen million, fifteen thousand dollars, to nineteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So very, very little. The overall budget, however, did increase by four million, fifty thousand dollars, which is primarily water and sewer cap spending and other water and sewer uses. The budget that had been proposed actually projected growth in meals, lodging, and sales taxes of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Again, not liable that growth happened per, we will be losing money this year and in FY twenty-one. As Gary mentioned, the school budget that was proposed is still largely intact in the budget. We believe, and I know the community is very concerned, that education and city schools are very high priority, so we work hard to try and make sure we can keep the largest needs of the schools in harmony with those. Again, as Gary mentioned, as the state are going to change that, to change, it won't go in a positive direction. We did include a school resource off of certain budget that's being looked at as far as I can spend, sure we might have to do without it. And we've been at the police department, we funded the police department after the schools. As I mentioned, we do have increased costs in the utilities, an eight percent increase in charges for services. Those are largely due to increases from the more service authority, or thirteen point eight five percent for sewer, eleven point four five percent for water. The other thing that I have made a high priority in the budget is compensation for our staff. We have an excellent staff, and just like our capital resources, we cannot let that degrade, we have to put some money into staff if we all can. Originally, this budget had a three percent increase in the staff. Gary and I have changed that now, made that increase to January one, a full half year of that increase as a minimum starting point to budget, a downed budget. The other area where there's a large increases is the jail, it's going up fifty-three percent for us initially, I'm getting, we're going to work on that, budget team over at the jail will try and bring that down some, that original fifty-three percent increase was a sixty-seven thousand dollars plus for the year. For the city, we had a halftime position in treasurer's office that's scheduled to be full time, that's already been cut as well, we mean it's halftime. The city's contribution to tourism and contribution to visiting the horse center are largely valued by revenues from sales, meals, and lodging taxes, so to a certain extent, if there were revenues free to go down for us, our contribution will go down to those agencies as well. That service has continued to fall for the city, it will go down by thirty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars in FY twenty-one, two point two hundred dollars in another part. And as far as the schedule goes for adoption of the budget, it really should be adopted by May seventh, because the schools have to have the budgets entered state with five days before the start of fiscal year. So we have to try and complete our work by May seventh, maybe perhaps a week or two longer, but that gets a little dicey. Other than what you've been providing tonight, there's one in front of you, is capital revenue reductions and taxes, and options with this figure twenty-one is costing. It looks, one sheet, very plain, should be the information that came provided. Yeah, yours is a little different from mine, so it's in main sheet as opposed to us. Is everyone found a parent in that test? My apologies, Gary and I and leadership team putting this together the last couple of days, so just, just.
Thanks, Gary.
Everyone's prepared there now? You can see we started out looking at two scenarios, and that was a ten percent reduction in our meals, lodging, sales and people taxes for FY twenty-one, and also a twenty percent reduction in those revenues. Ten percent comes in at a little under four hundred thousand dollars, twenty-nine, nine hundred, one fifty. Twenty percent is seven eighty-eight, three hundred thousand dollars. So that's what we started off with, trying to see if we can find savings in the budget. Under that, there's scenes, initial savings have come in from staff and some of our other regional partners, but primarily staff. And if we're looking at ten percent, we close that gap, we're in pretty good shape. If we're looking at the twenty percent reduction, we'd have to take about eighty thousand, more than that, out of five thousand sort of reserves to preserve the budget as presented in these cuts. You'll note, although that, recycling there is a possible not cheap cut, as appropriate, but it's not recommended at this time. I will say that not all the leadership team has come board with their FY twenty-one possible cuts yet, so there will be some other ones we can look at and propose and evaluate as we say that. But we felt pretty good that in a couple of days we're ready to put this together. And it was pretty good to us. You can see that we're talking about getting the late pay increase, treasurer's office would not get a whole-time position, closing down for pool for the entire season, pardon that's in just abundance of caution with health concerns as we start. Perhaps pulling out of COVID nineteen scenario, which was a lot high, why open it up? We need to save money, you need to realize how the situation is with that. As Gary mentioned, the ninety-two thousand dollars of school funding from Gary and Gordon money from this year, Ross Road Bridge design, spending delayed, which would mean the bridge construction would be delayed. Some savings in C I T for computer replacements, C I P budget, we eliminated another project that's going to take money. Savings in C I P means less, we have a fun contribution to the C I P as well. Fire department had deferred available, fifty-five thousand dollars, and some physicals and other possibilities in the fire department, another fifty-three thousand. If the agency for the police chief won't be at all, finance has a reduction, reductions in housing taxes, where centers have said, and then other agencies that are reduced, and that's the six thousand dollars for rescription agencies. So there are many other areas where we can look to find ten thousand, here five thousand, in twenty and thirty thousand. If we can waste larger vehicles, if we can waste purchase of fifty thousand. But as we mentioned earlier, you'll be saying, well, I'm first at policy safety. Some of those vehicles probably need to be replaced, but they may not serve soon. So those are kind of decisions we're going to make. I would put in mind like that, eight thousand dollar transmissions to a car with one hundred and sixty thousand miles, so is that peaceful? So that's what we're looking at as far as the hospital budget cuts at this point in time. There was another sheet that was provided to you, says options for cost reductions. And that's the, the whole list of items that we have looked at or are looking at. And those include things like weight elimination and traffic and training, except for licenser, licenser, certain patient requirements. And there are a number of issues of that nature that we put in place either for the FY twenty budget or will be extended in the FY twenty-one budget as well. But those are just a sort of worldview of many things to look at if you're looking at budget cuts. I mentioned tax increase. We currently do not have a tax for cigarettes in the city. And I would like to recommend you look very carefully at that. I mean, well, in this budget cycle, I have communicated with county administrator, they are looking at that option as well. Now, they have to have legislation change to be able to accomplish that. But my understanding from county administrator, that legislation is already forwarded down assembly, either has been approved or putting, so it will allow all counties to raise their cigarette tax, or actually have cigarette tax. But I had Gary to look at that. He said he can see it, he can provide what we need, so we'll get that as we move forward. Not knowing what those revenues would be, Gary and I would suggest that we leave that in for pushing. It's not going to get fortunate, but if we see things change in the budget and continue to find whatever revenues might be there, fill some gaps. And if I know we look better than we thought, then maybe that will on some of these, we did cut there. So that's what I was looking at is budget here today. Now, we've got about ten minutes, so I'm going to pass down to each of you, as I mentioned, some documentation I've received just today and yesterday. First document comes from B M L, we got it four or fifteen months yesterday. It says COVID nineteen revenue shock for local governments in Virginia. B M L identified five, all the taxes, same ones Gary and I saw on sales, business and franchise taxes, hotel, motel, restaurant, food taxes and admission taxes. We don't have admission taxes, we're not affected by that. There is, they are looking at estimated ten percent fine sale tax, twenty percent fine business taxes, fifty percent fine hotel taxes, meals, seven percent fine admission taxes for this current. We didn't come up with that number, but I still have something very close to looking at that. And see the statements, a little bit highlighted, this is a rough time of year for you and every city council, county board, and administrators and state trying to build this. We don't have that information at this very moment, but we're looking at a budget defined to see FY twenty-one. And we also don't know exactly how this is going to happen since we didn't start FY twenty-one this year. Second document I have came in. Ninety forty-eight this morning, came in from Jay Langton, Chandler about partnership. And he was commenting on a presentation from Renee Hall in Harrisburg, who was with Richmond double reserve. She commented that consumer consumption is seventy percent of each time in general in Harrisburg, but in these current conditions, it's the industry that has been shut down. We had two type labor markets, we get in there, there's a broad process or process for damage acquisition, but how bad could we get, her estimation, the G, well, ten percent. He also made, she also made a statement about manufacturing in the valley, which probably isn't a pilot for us, but so far that sector seems pretty good from first hand. The last document that came in, came in from Virginia First City, I received it in four thirteen this afternoon. And that's the multiple argument went off, unfortunately. If you turn to the middle of the document, it'll say money is dealt with by the area of First City. And it looks at, so Virginia First City members, and what happened to our revenues in both the current year and the end year. If you look at the second page, the highlight figure show again those vulnerable taxes and see what percentage of those taxes are in our budget based on Virginia First City's habits, research in our budget figures that we provide in prior years. On page two, you can see the tables of time, how much revenue loss comes with labor need will occur in those taxes, both this year FY twenty and FY twenty-one. You can see that our Gary and I estimated ten or twenty percent possibility, they're looking at twenty-five percent people, twenty-five percent franchise, I can see hotels, twenty-five percent meals, ten percent wholesale sales. So it could be a little worse. If you turn to the final page, they actually have an estimate of what the threshold losses look like in their view for less than ten. See the current year, that's going to be seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Now, that could be true, but Gary and I already looked at our meals, lodging, taxes, revenues, and for the year we were two hundred thousand some ahead compared. So even if we have seven hundred some odd thousand lost, based on our current budget, we were running two hundred thousand dollars ahead of budget figures. So it probably hits quite softly. The more alarming numbers in FY twenty-one, to me, when they predicted one million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars losses, but as we noted earlier, the scenario that Gary and I looked at, would replace seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue cuts we had already identified. So we need to double those cuts if this is true. Now, in my belief, we would be doing some harm to the city that would not be sustainable, would not, would not arise. And I would certainly recommend, have to look carefully, see how some of it can, and using some of our reserves. Now, I'm very conservative when it comes to working on budgets, but when you think about why we have reserves, this is the time why we have reserves. When we reach these conditions, we have to maintain and reserve, whereas important for the city, sometimes we like to use those reserves, hold on to a hundred thousand dollars if this scenario becomes a task, so that we maintain what we need for us. I'm not even going anywhere to tell where our current people have to hold it here in force of the budget, but there's any questions about financials?
There was council, any questions? There are many, there are two. It's the observation of wow. Lots of opinions and lots of, right numbers. Seven fifty-seven, it's going to start at eight. There's an objection to adjourn the first session, pick up with suppression, I can get started back up later. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the April second, this is the city council meeting to order, and thank you all for being here in person that are here staff and those who are literally on Zoom. And thank you to staff, Nathan Strong, Jenny Hostetler, for getting this wired and hopefully fully operating as intended. For all the council, this is our first effort and a paperless, despite the stacks of paperwork we're up in your place tonight, but we have new iCom's computers software to work with and they're getting for organizing and implementing and getting even us grandparents to love how to turn on a computer functional on this project. First order of business, if you could all please stand and join me, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next time on agendas, approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any additions or any changes to the agenda. Hearing done, we will accept it as presented. Instead of reading the two proclamations that I have, I will just acknowledge a proclamation establishing April twenty-second, two thousand twenty, as Arbor Day in Lexington, and look forward to working with our harvest and planting some trees and encourage everyone to take an opportunity to plant a tree or flowers or some other type of outdoor recreation, but specifically on April twenty-second, and stop, acknowledge Arbor Day. Also, in working with, they have a statement, me and Lee, in Florida with our foster care awareness month, I declare a day as foster care awareness month in Arizona, Virginia. Remind everyone the opportunity to foster children in our community and encourage them to participate in support of the children in our community. And I would, to every those that are tired of two weeks, I will be part of the minutes and will distribute it to the two organizations, to our C R R system, to the foster care interest set organization. Next, I have this presentation, so I'm not aware of any. And next we'll be jumping right to public hearings. First public hearings on the capital, capital improvement plan and S P I D reports, wisdom or special pleading to it?
I will say, the council that had, you may have heard some of the items that I mentioned in the first session, that were in the capital improvement plan, how how would the capital improvement plan of that be supplied? Looking at FY twenty-one, we had originally planned to do the study of the Ross Road Bridge Engineering, just over a hundred thousand dollars that had been reflected, recommended budget. Free resurfacing statewide has been removed, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Two pool civilian renovations, fifteen thousand dollars has been removed, arson playground raised fifty thousand removed, twelve more improvements, five thousand. Those are recommended at this time. One of them could be placed back in the budget, some other things out, where we had funding from reserves that council wanted to admit. But again, I think we should wait probably a number of weeks, probably till the middle of May, when the budget has to be passed before we make some, make some, it's hard decision to learn from that. So unfortunately, the capital improvement plan, which is very important for us, year in, year out, does not contain as much in that plan as we had including this leader. We've got HVAC up, we have fire department, still left there, but we're supposed to have conditions of those men and women working in under the city, and so they can respond properly. We also have some work in the high school that's still on track, maybe some work on some of our cycle repairs and countdown planes. But other than that, actually, capital plan is wrong. Those are easier cuts to make when you don't have much available and delayed. I believe they will be delayed until future. I believe they will be delayed until future. That's the only comments I have at this juncture. In the utility part, I would say that, um, those, those needs will be going forward for the most part in the fiscal year because we do have funding set aside for those building projects. Including water, wastewater projects throughout the community, Washington, Nancy Randall, Roughland, Public Street, Washington Street, etc. So we're hoping to make the most of those improvements in the year to come. But we'll have to see how those things are not as well, just as much impacted by the total budget.
I have a question. The information that you shared during the work session about the CIP and possible cuts, will there be a revised budget? I mean, are you, are you completely proposing an edit to the proposed CIP, to the proposed budget right now? That we, in doing so, will be updated when this is available online? Because I feel like what's published right now, the proposed budget, still has got to be edited. Will we update it?
Yes, all documents will be updated, including those online. Again, we just put these, this recommendation together in the last few days. So that's that behind here.
Just to set expectations, so on, if we, uh, postcards for resurfacing, that includes the Main Street resurfacing as well?
I'm not aware that that was in the budget this year. I don't believe that's the case, FY21, period, is that the case?
The latest information that Jeff Markin has from BDOT is that the Main Street repaving is going to be approved and the primary extension shaving grant, it still has to go before the Commonwealth Transportation Board. So, uh, at least BDOT thinks that it's close to an end date. I guess there's good news and bad news. The good news is that we won't have to be starting funds, therefore we won't need that hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Let's see, I'm keeping cost. We also have eight hundred, approximately eight hundred thousand dollars each year that comes in the form of state street payments. Now, of course, some of that has to be used for, uh, snow and ice removal, right away maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. That generally allows us to have certainly many hundreds of thousands of dollars to do repaving. And that's the source of most of our repaving projects. Now, the advantage of it being in the state grant, uh, BDOT doesn't work very fast in approving things. So it's likely going to be in spring twenty-one paid for projects rather than this coming summer's paid for projects. So there's good news, bad news, and it's going to be, we believe, funded by the state.
Thank you, Gary.
And then just one other comment. So there are no proposed cuts in the utility fund, it's all the capital fund, which?
That is correct, um, you know, we don't believe we will see any losses, revenues because of COVID-19 pandemic in our utility funds. There are any different require revenues in general, however, it's impacted and utility funds are quite a complete influence.
Well, again, any cuts, but if that's the case, there will be a lot of important work done throughout the year. And that, one thing that's a nice clue that's prices is to know that the city has maintained water lines. And the police have been there, the fire rescue have all maintained those important departments. So we have some stability and we will continue to replace our water lines. It's kind of, you know, with some cuts in the capital.
The core functions of the government, as you pointed out, are at stake in place. Of course, we have the roadmap, major roadmap for replacing. And that's my, I believe, part of, and maybe what Gary wants to do.
Actually, what I want to speak to, uh, there will be, at least in the short term, specifically in fiscal year twenty, some loss of revenue, uh, virtue of the two schools being closed and the students not being there. Now, an important point to note is that a large percentage of our operating budget through the utility fund are being paid to the fire service department. So on the one hand, we're going to be buying less water and paying for the trickle less sewage. At the same time, we're having less water consumed than we built for. So I don't believe that it's going to have a significant impact in total net on the utility fund. We'd also want to point out that these projects and what I'll loosely refer to as the diamond hill area, the water sewer, are still under design. So we're getting refined construction estimates as we go along. And Jeff Markins and his staffs working with engineers, signed engineers. So that, that seems to be a constant moving part. And until they finish designing, really won't get handled on the construction estimate. But if the economy tax, which is made well, might have worked in our favor in better construction deals, so one on that.
It'll be sure as we'll be buying less water, but keep in mind, the debt service store in S.A. and other fixed costs don't stop. So water rates keep getting down month again, which is unfortunate. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. We're in a unique situation that we decided to meet in person, absolutely not invite public, but did invite public to write in ahead of time and comment. And I'm only aware of one communication for CIP. And that was from John Ellisden and Tothe Biddham and Jerry Morgan in reference to Kids Place. And seeking attention and a way forward for taking care of or perhaps replacing Kids Place. Their comments will be published in the minutes available to the public online through our minutes. Or if someone would like to see them more quickly, in contact City Hall, we can copy and we'll read the entire letter. But the ask at the end of this reading, the three of us, a couple of the others from the original organizing committee, are committed to working with the city in getting a planning and this planning and identifying other interested citizens within the community. We hope that you will see the importance of Kids Place and move forward immediately. The postscript recognizes that since they drafted this, the world has changed quite a bit. And they realize this may not be one of the city's top priorities. But once this emergency situation passed, the plan proposed needs to be dead and harmless. So that will be entered into the minutes entirely as part of the public hearing. And let's see, anyone else who would like to stick to this matter? I would close the public hearing and put along to six point two proposed fiscal twenty-one agency funding request. And open the public hearing to hear public comment. Again, we have no one in the audience and we do not have established a way for folks to communicate online with this term and this time. But we do have communications from several organizations, I would acknowledge the organizations. And again, these will be entered to minutes available online. If anyone wishes to see them sooner, please contact GPT City Hall. But we have communication from Bobby Wagner, in support of the YCA. We have Rocker Area Habitat for Humanity. We have Rocker Area Community Services Board, Kim Shaw. And, uh, that's it, I'm aware of, that was four. Very good, apologies if I was on one. Additionally, from Valentina in Trova and Ford Swimming. So, have requests. From Valley Program for Agen, from Laura Hager. The Chamber of Commerce, from Tracy Lyons, the executive director. Daniel Swift, from the Talking Book Center. And Tara Ruddy with the SPCA. One more, uh, the Central Chamber Health Department. And it's worse. So those folks have submitted comments and requests for agency funding. And again, those are minutes or on the website. So if there's anyone else here to speak to the agency funding request, I'll close that public hearing. And moving lastly to the pregnant public hearing and receive public comment on our operating budgets. We do not have any. As it's, as you may have put in there early to the work session, everything's changing in real time. And I have some additional recommendations, but I will close the right of public hearing with notes and comments I received from the public in real format. Next is approval of that's the February sixth regular meeting and the February twenty work session. Everyone has those prior conveniences, actually review them. And we will accept those as presented. I'm not aware of any, any remarks or comments. We have to divide those as proposed to be. Consent agenda, we're all opposed to remove.
Rushy Hills is still on.
Rushy Hills is still on?
Yes.
The Rocket Bridge, uh, canceled? So for your consideration, is Peter Jen and the party, Rushy Hill Trail Run? That's your consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda to include, I have nine point one, the question of the future topic. Rushy Hills Preserve, Trail Run, second.
I would wish to second the discussion. Trying to think, it just don't, I mean, Michelle's not with us in person, but it's, uh, because she's assuming and she's not able to vote. She'll recognize that, you know, Michelle Hansen's with us in electronic, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
This is Alexander.
Hi.
Astron.
Hi.
Mr. Yager.
Hi.
Pressure carries, you have a sleep, five to zero.
Just a question, is Michelle choosing not to vote, she can vote, who has that ordinance? She wanted to get her.
I was, yeah, I wasn't sure, am I voting?
Uh, I was thinking that you couldn't, but yes, we'd love for you to vote and you're voting on that time side?
I'm here.
Consent agenda?
Yes, yes, I.
And motion here is six to zero. Thank you, Michelle, and good evening. Now, next item is unfinished business, the city council meeting time. A discussion with council members. Forgive me, I'm trying to figure out, so I have a work on my Mac here, my, uh, computer. So I'm playing, playing for my paper, or wishing my paper were hidden. A conversation with everyone, I, uh, the reception I had, certainly we can obtain a motion somewhere like three months forward. But for this of January, it might involve the things that staff has going on. Perhaps craft a new ordinance, it's not a higher priority at this point. Unless there's objection, we'll just let that, remove that from future, only to take up, and when the new council comes on board, so. Yes, ma'am.
I would agree with that, only unless because of staff, work, maybe the hours, starting those prices. If it would make it like any easier on them to move up through time in particular, that'd be one reason I'd say it was a point to take that issue on.
Do you want to respond to that or?
I, well, I believe that we, with you at this time for timing, we'll sort of say.
Thank you very much. Next item of business is boards of commissions, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Vice President, will be on the front, they need boarding to tighten up the budget and, uh, without a public hearing on that following Monday. That public hearing budget and the, uh, difference.
Thank you, sir. Main Street lessons.
We have not yet, but as you heard during consent agenda, the Rocket Bridge that was supposed to be in May has been canceled. Free Food Festival of July has been canceled as well. And I just encourage everybody to please consider buying gifts or something, get doing that on business. We're calling that, ordering something, picking it up herb side, same thing for restaurants. A lot of our restaurants are doing herb side delivery, it works really well.
Case homeless is good. Always better than there in person. Thank you. Piner Commission.
Very good.
Very good. Well, question, Piner Commission is capable to meet, uh, will it be next Thursday?
We're supposed to be met next Thursday, we will not be, but you may get a draft to review of some of the, uh, companies and planning chapters, report that, been through the final draft cycle. But I'm not sure if you'll get that, you did not get them last week, so I'm not sure if you'll understand.
Very good. I'm hopeful that things that are perking and we're not told you have any, uh, business folks or, uh, projects, might not be able to hopefully be also the concern for us. We're sure we will allow Piner Commission to meet personally, that we'll consider that. Regional tourism boards, traders.
Yeah, the first award fit in one last video, I wouldn't say marketing, but we all sat in six parts. Big topic discussion that kind of orders of marketing message in light of COVID-19. Obviously, we don't need encouraging visitation directly at this time. So advice, we're not already contracted for it, in particular, these expectation, the marketing, advertising, we're not, we're not definitely wanting to get past this crisis. We also approved our budgets at the time. However, that actually is maybe in the air as well. We actually met with Jim, uh, actually, yeah, there, um, was it you guys or? Yes, so Jim, Jim Flot and myself and Jim got together and we came up with the idea to propose that regional tourism offer a reduction in quarterly payments that the jurisdictions contribute to tourism for the next five quarters, so that would be in the April quarter and go through the four quarters the next year. So that ten percent reduction would go down to a hundred thousand dollars for how the tourism's budgets. And for less, it's a portion of the workout of thirty-six thousand dollars. Keeping in mind that after that, the tourism budgets, we dramatically impacted by the loss of the logic taxes in two. But we, I think, this will have to be approved by the board, I'm saying, at our next meeting. And there's, but I think. And there's lots, but I think.
Mike McGeary, Park and Social Services, Michelle, you ready to report?
Yes. The board did not meet in person because of the COVID-19 issues, but they did meet electronically by means of communication, but according to the Virginia Code, we can only meet as a whole to discuss emergency. This is related to when the governor has declared a state of an emergency, the purpose of the meeting is limited to addressing the emergency, so the only topic we could meet about was COVID-related issues. The Department of Social Services is closed to the public, some employees are telecommuting. Eligibility and administrative staff are working at the office, but most likely will be moving staff to work at home as soon as they're able to work out with the state, some of the technological issues in the, in the server. The CPS and APS staff are still going out to the homes because they are considered first responders, but they have no PPE, so right now they're avoiding going into the home and keeping distance, you know, six feet or more when they're making those calls to the homes. In terms of benefits, SNAP benefits, we would expect it to have seen a real up check, but not yet. So, we see about 67 applicants in a day as opposed to five a day, but I think that will, that will go up. And the companion services for APS, we stopped that for now. And we are also in the process, the board is completing the survey that Bathcavil has sent us to help them with the RFP, and so I think that hasn't been delayed, I think that's moving along as planned. And we're still, I think the lease that we agreed on is $9,000, and that's still in Mr. Woody's hands right now, so hopefully that'll be finalized. And that's my report.
Thank you, Michelle. RARO. Normally, the RARO Board of Directors would have met first place, say, of the month, which was yesterday, but we're delayed, are meeting until next week, on the 8th, when we did meet electronically on the heels of us passing the ordinance tonight. But the Executive Director did put forth his monthly report to us. The RARO offices are closed to the public. If you need to get a void of RARO staff, they are available, you can call, of course, email. RARO, yeah, sad report, because we're not going to get to participate in our sports season, but we almost have 300 kids signed up to participate in all of our programs, which is one of my favorite seasons, softball, volleyball, river runners, and then, and I'll speak, even though they're not RARO programs, but they're licensing programs, United Licenseable Props, those are programs that are independent of RARO, but we all work together to provide, you know, opportunities for hundreds of kids that are in community. And so, you know, as we're all quarantined, staying at home with our kids, our kids really are missing out on those great opportunities. So, RARO's looking at their budget right now, looking at what money we're going to save here at the end of the year and going forward, but really, RARO's just excited to get back to doing what they do in the fall. So, I'll share that with you. Again, the fact is, we had nine volleyball diamonds online ready to be used to spread, nine diamonds, baseball, softball diamonds across the county and city, Vida Vista. We're really fortunate, the building trades class over at Perry Court was going to help us at Royal Park, they're still going to, I believe, but the roofs on the dugouts over there, some improvements. So, RARO had projects, we wanted to do things for our kids, but we're in the same predicament that everyone else is, so that includes my report. Thank you, sir. Michelle, Ms. Alexander.
Michelle do not need for the scheduled report, we are shooting, so everything is on hold. Applications for spending, home repair services, those are all pending, until further notice in regard to the.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Alexander. For my reports, general comments, one appointment for your consideration. First, I'd say, I know I see part of council, huge thank you to all of staff and our first responders for all the work that you all have done in bizarre circumstances. Certain businesses have had to close and businesses have been deemed not essential, hairdressers and others have been closed by the governor. The local government doesn't stop, everything from Jeff Martin group with picking up trash, fixing things, police and fire rescue, making sure our streets and our neighbors are safe and well tended to. So, thank you very, very much for your work in really, really unique circumstances. And I want to say how, my, how our lives have changed in other shape and I know, however, this COVID-19 virus is extremely serious, and as indicated in my letter to the community earlier this week, we all must take the situation seriously, endure our parts of minimize and spread this virus. This is the goal that we all must work to achieve. Please wash your hands, keep your distance from one another, do not touch your face, and do not go out unless you're absolutely with us. We have a great community, and this virus is not solely the good deeds, the kindness, and the generosity in our community. I, the person who received several calls from people wanting to help. Help to meet the needs of those in need and plan for events to raise money and spirits as we conclude this chapter in the line. The City Council, Chamber of Commerce, Major Lexis, and the Regional Tourism Board. There is people who are working to raise money and organize money events to uphold spirits in our community who wants this in the office and even during a time of emergency. Please check online for, but please check online for home organizations to learn more and see how you can benefit and or support their efforts with your time, your talents, and your pocketbook. Also, my thanks, our thanks go to our medical professionals, specifically Dr. Laura Corninge, our emergency management professionals, and our team at Stonewall Jackson Hospital led by Gregan Patterson. But their extensive efforts to repair are positively planned, we can all have confidence in care and attention should the need medical attention. I hope you all take the steps to clear a body to achieve the goal, minimize the spread of this virus. We had a vacancy on the IDA, and Charles Alkaid has applied, made application, and offers a name for appointment to the IDA for the balance of an unexpired term that will begin immediately and expire May 1st of 2021. What is your consideration?
I look to approve, Bob, it's Charles Alkaid. Appointment to the IDA, the full term of expiration should be spread.
I have a motion to second the discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Hess.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Yager.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries, you have a sleep, five to zero. This point likes to bounce past it to our chief manager.
Mayor, I'd like to use a little bit of my report for time to have our chief, I guess, give us a report, council report on many of the COVID-19 related activities that have been going on here in Lexington, and would we part of the then of region with the Congress Council, City of E.
Thank you all, I have this in my packet, so I'm not going to review all of it to you. Sure, Jim, draft copy, told me it was too long, took it back, okay, I have some more things to review, unfortunately, but this is important stuff. I will actually start with news that I'm sitting in the car out back getting VDH update today for the region, three more positive cases for what we are calling the region here in Lexington, Rocket Bridge, and Vida Vista, these three cases are here in the city of Lexington. If you're looking at VDH's website, may take a couple of days for that to get updated. They have to get new to every day, the things that they have by 5 o'clock previous day, and they're having some technical problems. That is phone call that I received, don't wait to meet with them. Luckily, we're about unfinished of this, with no one in sight. Nobody's ever experienced anything like this in scarlet fever in the 1940s. This is a public health emergency in the Virginia Department of Health, Digital Lead Agency. Even at the state level, VDEM is a support and coordinating agency for the VDH, the governor and the legislature. FEMA is in a similar role. Your emergency management team here is not the match to the solution of COVID, and we're here as a support agency for you all too. There are four tenants to emergency management, mitigation, that's things like flood mitigation, storm readiness, you know, structures, earthquake resistant structures, preparedness, response, and recovery. For this disaster, I really feel we're in the preparedness phase right now. The worst is you have to come, some models have to predict, Virginia will peak in mid to late May, and Mount Carle will take a month, and those models are constantly shifting, constantly changing. We really don't know for sure. State and national level planning and preparedness has historically been focused on the regional event such as a terror attack in New York City, in California, where we could mobilize the people who were unaffected to help those who are in need. We've never seen in our lifetime anything like this where not only the entire country is affected, but the entire world, there isn't anybody to send the help. New York City Fire Department EMS program is overwhelmed, they brought in 250 outside ambulances, but in a very unique case, these are not other fire departments going there to help people, it's the private ambulance companies that have been contracted to do that. Because, you know, when Charlottesville had their problem there, in the days that ensued, Lexington and other departments in the state providing fire rescue resources to support Charlottesville a few years ago. No one can do that in this state. There is no strategic national stockpiles, while there is, there's none big enough to support the entire country's needs at one time. We've created a regional emergency management task force, that's the emergency management folks from all three local departments to work together, and brought in many stakeholders that are active participants, customers of three local departments, licensed, everybody's doing a little something, Lexington is taking the lead on assembling, disseminating, a daily detective brief for that task force and the stakeholders that I'm sure you all have seen, fair amount of work goes into that, but it's been a great tool. We're also coordinating a weekly conference call, that is about 50 of our key stakeholders here, like the hospital, the health center, the long-term care facilities, the schools, all that kind of stuff, are partnering together. We have invented from the ground up and then updated several times, standard operating guidelines for our response to COVID-19 calls by our EMS. I'm estimating in excess of 30 of those calls in the month of March, where we sort of suspected that the person might have first-line screening with questions and symptoms and that kind of stuff. We're now using those procedures and guidelines on every EMS call, as we've transitioned to what's called community spread. We're just assuming that, you know, we respond to somebody who tripped and fell on the sidewalk, they still may have the coronavirus. We've been involved in VDH's contracts tracing and exposure reporting for regional cases of suspected patient under investigation. All patients who test positive are required to quarantine, follow their quarantine instructions, they must sign a form agreeing to do so, and if they call 911 for assistance, they must identify that they're a positive COVID patient to the 911 dispatcher, who then make sure that any responding first responders. That's a relatively new program by order from the Health Director, which our first responders are very appreciative of. Quarantine in Virginia is forcible by court order, if somebody fails to comply. The last conversation I had with the Health Department person was that they had had voluntary cooperation in every single case in this state of Virginia. We've established a virtual EOC, so some of you have learned in the years about our EOC, a group full of people, that's just not practical, A, because we don't have enough people, and B, because of the social distancing concerns. Our group of those folks on the, on the fly have created an online, up-to-date Excel spreadsheet was way up there. I'm spreadsheet negative 101, kind of guy, but you can literally bring that up on your web browser and watch somebody else type them in it, and they're sharing information, and this week we released that beyond the emergency management folks, all those other stakeholders in that group that we created, so they can submit their needs requests and see the status of the sales. They will live time. We supplied information to the tourism group to create some PSAs targeted towards local business owners and operators, extensive efforts to source personal protective equipment to meet our burden rate. We currently have an adequate PPE for less than one month. We're sharing that with other agencies who are in worship than we are. So far, provided over 200 of the N95 masks to critical need areas. Six months ago, we could buy an N95 mask for $1.35 each. As of today, $8 apiece, they're not available. We had regular routine, relied on suppliers for years. What we've been getting in the last few weeks, we've been eBay shopping. Fortunately, at some pretty competitive prices, and we avoided any of that price category. We're developing alternative plans for extending life, this is disposable stuff. At $1.35 a mask, we're supposed to wear it, but agent, and throw it away. We have ordered, and are waiting for shipment out from outside the country, to use the disinfection, they look like toaster ovens, to be able to put, and I hate, I hate as a boss to be in this position, to ask somebody to take that mask and that should be disposable, but all their life they've been taught it's disposable. We're currently asking them to use it five times and store it in paperback with a label, so we're buying little paper sacks when I had them when I was a kid, to take my clothes to school. We've increased, oh, it was recently amended yesterday, they forward a lot of, a lot of stuff from the head of emergency management, says that while they recognize the logistics of the PPE is critical for everybody, their total look out is prepared to be self-reliant for 30 to 60 days before they can supply us with. We've increased communications with every stakeholder, and it's a wide group, this is just some of the examples of a health, hospital, hospice, health care, I'm sorry, health center, long-term care facilities, VDEM, and our citizens. License and Fire Department has already had one close call, lost work time for quarantine of two employees for a patient who was not intentionally PPE, didn't tell us when he called, and this was in the early stages of this, where we treated every patient as a suspected COVID patient, and after our providers had made contact with him and helping him up off the floor, he explained about how sick he had been since he got home from his groups. Lost a little bit of time there, that test came back negative, and we went out managing this exposure reporting to the potential workers companies. We currently have, the note here says, four staff members at home awaiting test results on two patients. I am happy to report tonight that one of those test results came back this afternoon, and two of those staff members found out that the patient at the club might have COVID, or that test came back negative, they'll be in work tomorrow. We've created staffing contingency plans in case we have to lose workforce for exposure or infection. We've created staff quarantine. We've created staff quarantine plans to keep exposed workers from carrying it home, or contributing to their families, or contributing to the community spread. We reviewed disaster mortuary and hospitality plans with VDEM, Funeral Correctors Association. We shared the medical examiner office information with the local funeral homes, so there's another. Non-serious COVID patients. Being a full-fledged hospital, it could be used for non-COVID patients to make room in the hospital for more serious COVID patients, or they could be used for what is called non-comedically sheltering, homeless sheltering. There is a big move to try to provide during this pandemic some sheltering for homeless folks so that they're not wandering as much and contributing potentially to the community spread. We've worked with the Department of Health and the hospital to find and establish some of that surge capacity. Talked about, we've worked on dusting off a point-of-distribution POD plan. Does anybody remember this advertising last fall? There was, you could drive through, it really wasn't drive-through in that case, but you could go to the high school and walk into the gymnasium and get a free flu shot. That was actually a test that was called POD, point-of-distribution. And about a year or two before that, you did an actual drive-through one in the road behind the hospital, if anybody remembers that. Those plans could be used, similar setups for mass testing, if that ever comes to effect, or a mass vaccination with vaccine wear. Many years ago, after the deratio of 2012, Lexington decided to become more proactive about emergency management. A position was created within the fire department. Sort of part-time, it's a full-time position with a share of duties for a fire marshal and emergency manager. Lieutenant Roberts does a fantastic job with that, but we're still a part-time emergency management program. His duties for that, this disaster can't be done 20 hours a week. Thanks to the city manager and our building official Steve Paul, who has the fire marshal certification. He's assumed many of those fire marshal duties to allow Trent to work on that full-time, work on this full-time. Emergency management is, it's not one or two people who make magic happen. It's bringing together the teams and the experts and finding those, and helping them create any structure that we're analyzing. It's like setting up a factory on a fly and creating that organization and structural structure. It's a long-term planning, training, coordination, and relationship builder. We're partnering among all these different specialties that we don't know anything about to try to help you put the teams together. There's almost two pages to some of those functions that we would be doing as this thing grows. We're covering many, certainly not all of those. We're certainly not covering them as well as we'd like to, but we're getting great support from city staff, the HR director, Jamie, the city manager, the IT folks, everybody's trying to pick up a little piece of this pie where they can. Economic recovery will be the final phase of this disaster, and I fear probably the longest, I hope I'm wrong. It will require you all to choose a comprehensive team of experts in that field to understand the options available to individuals and businesses for the city and for the city with the assistance of the state and federal agencies facilitated by emergency management. When the time comes to assist and support our constituents in navigating the recovery options, let the government provide. We're less than a week away from the passage of the CARES Act, the $2 trillion federal. People are still reading that to find out what we passed. So, and then understanding the application of those programs and that kind of stuff, that's, a lot of that stuff is a ways down. I'm loaded for questions. More ideas?
On the three cases in Lexington, where they, was the origins of those cases kind of identified, whether they're travelers or?
VDH takes care of that, and they have what they call contact tracing and that kind of stuff. They have teams of people who work on that, because we don't usually. This is also a challenging disaster because there's questions that we can't get the answers to because all of our medical health as individuals is protected. The other is that it's, it's only amount of information that flows amongst all these players. Their system would break down if they stopped to tell everybody who was involved in one of these everything that they learned about. It would drag those teams who need to move on in their contact tracing for that particular patient or for the next patient, drag them to a party. So we may learn that later in the report, probably in rough statistics, what they think were international travel versus community spread or something like that. Those details are, the release of that information about where those people live is a relatively new thing for us.
Currently, what is the timeframe on test fit for our area?
If the test goes to the state lab 24 to 48 hours. If the test goes to one of the private labs, the state lab has less capacity. We beg for, and the test for a patient that is one of our first responders been exposed to, goes to the state lab, speed that up. And we make a decision about the first responders that exposed and cannot come back to work. Maybe that accommodating from that. Move into the private lab four to seven days, I'm hearing the thing is long as 10, and that's a good news pattern. As you, we are getting more test kits out across the country, so that means there's more tests going to the labs. And the labs are just huge, they have machines, and they can only process so many, so many. I'm sure there's probably a point where some of those labs have a live mobile testing.
Any other questions for Todd? Have you folks ever tested regionally? Did they, I don't know. Something like that could be kind of VDH website perhaps, so?
Yeah, there's a ton of stuff on that VDH website. When you look at their statistics, figure there's a lag time, a few days in there. But I don't know.
It was just confusing as listening, what if somebody gets, has a fever, has something, what do you suggest they do?
I suggest that they call their primary care physician. The last thing that most doctors wonder, if you're not able to work, I'm not saying you're not going to get seen, but probably the first thing that happens is that primary care physician's office is going to ask you some questions if they think you rise to that occasion. From that first-level screening, they're probably going to make arrangements to bring you in at a specific time, at a specific door, you know. They don't want you maybe walking through the way room where they've got 10 other people who are healthy, in case you end up after, so. Understand that many of the people who have this are not requiring any complex medical care. All the cases here in this region that I'm aware of are at home, taken care of themselves.
Todd, thanks for being here. Has the appreciation to Trent, leading the charge, providing those reports. The report that's provided on a daily basis, what is the destination of that?
That is that emergency management task force that we talked about and those stakeholders. Local school districts, the universities, the long-term care facilities, nursing homes, hospitals, the health center, community service board, those kind of groups that are active groups on the ground in healthcare provision, or a large group handling the people.
It's terrible, this hits in flu season, some people, they think they have symptoms, but hopefully it would just be their allergies.
Flu and allergy for, you know, protect some of the same symptoms. That's why it's important to start with that screening. If you call 911, they're going to ask you some questions. When we show up at your front door in the ambulance, we're going to ask you some more questions. And if we suspect this might be a coronavirus case, we're going to notify the hospital. They have a special medical pressure area set aside to receive those patients. And the doctors, you know a lot more about medicine than us road doctors, in the back of the ambulance, are going to ask you some even more questions before they move you onto the testing floor.
Thanks, Ken, for the preparation. For both listening, it's important to our community to understand the measures that we've taken internally and as a region to prepare for what may be coming in later April, early May. But again, prudent circumstances, keep your distance, work up to get it, wash your hands, be discreetly, and stay away from folks if possible.
Correct. I really cannot emphasize the social distancing. I was a fire chief in the metro DC area on 9/11, and I felt that that was probably one of the most amazing few months of, or so of my life that I would ever see in what is now 42 years in this business. COVID is knocking on that door of. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Our HR director, Ron Bailey, is also here, and I'd like to share something here to internally protect our staff, to protect our procedures, and also protect the public as well.
How are you all tonight? So just a few things that we're doing to help keep our staff as happy and healthy as we can. Number one is Congress passed a bill that will probably be going to have to go now. And as part of that, they mandated emergency sick leave, and also enhanced FMLA benefits under certain circumstances. So I have drafted a policy consistent with that legislation. Made a part of our policy manual and made all of the supervisors aware of that in cases that they have employees that meet those criteria. Of course, encouraging everybody to wash their hands, use available personal protective equipment that's available. Some of the offices in city hall, Commissioner of the Revenue and Treasurer, they use gloves when they receive documents from outside just to offer an additional layer of protection. Also, just before everything went totally crazy, I went to Kroger and managed to get like the last five or six things of wipes that they had on the shelves that I gave those different offices, rest of the hall, just wipe down, flat surfaces. Just kind of make it, make it as clean as we can. Now also, currently, city buildings, we have either no public access or very limited public access. City hall is currently closed to the public, so I'd have to keep it in and out. Todd, I know with the fire department, you're actively screening your staff and anybody else that comes into the fire department every day, asking them questions and checking their forehead thermometer just to, I guess, kind of triage a little, but I guess you'd say who's coming in there, who's, you know, they'd say, at least they help you to fight fires. One of the things in times like this is mental health is very important. So as part of our benefits package, we do have an employee assistance program. I made that information available to supervisors, pass it along to their staff. Those services are available to anybody who's on our health insurance, along with any of their family members. It's 100% free, and that service can also be delivered electronically, so they don't have to go physically seeing anybody so we can observe through social distance. One thing also, we're in open enrollment season for our health benefits. I initially planned to hold open enrollment meetings throughout the city just to ready the rate of speed on what the benefits are going to look like. We have actually changed that to a webinar format. Jean Clark Tourism, being a super pole, is letting us use her facility on Washington Street, got lots of space, so we can space out the chairs, make sure everybody's got an appropriate number of feet in between them. And of course, we'll sort of the 10 or less rule. So just today, Jim approved a temporary telecommuting policy for the city. So anybody who can reasonably do their job from home will be able to do so, starting on Monday. We don't have a definite ending period for that policy just yet, because we don't really know how long this is going to go. But in the meantime, supervisors are talking with their staff to see who would be a good fit for this. And they're getting in touch with Nathan relative to IT needs, VPN network access, those sorts of things. And then, last but not least, you know, there is staff that have to continue to do their job no matter what. So we are talking to supervisors who have staff in those particular situations to see if they can start designing shifts that will allow them to stagger so that they're home a couple of days a week, but then they're also at work several days a week and going back and forth, so that we can, you know, continue to offer those essential services, but also let them space out a bit. But of course, this is a very dynamic situation, so this is what we're doing for now. That's what we're doing tomorrow or next week, honestly, it's just about anybody's guess. But we're doing the best we can.
Any questions, Rob? Probably with the Ken about the leave act. If someone is impacted, their family is impacted by COVID-19, they can request if it's two weeks that's available or walk me through that piece?
So there's two pieces. So you've got the emergency sick leave piece, and you've got the FMLA piece. And so the sick leave is broken into two categories. You've basically got the category that involves you. Like you've got to stay home because they told you to, or, you know, you've got COVID-19 symptoms, or you've got some kind of an underlying condition that makes it very dangerous for you to go out. In those situations, you get up to 80 hours of emergency sick leave paid at 100%. Now, there's another side to this as well, where if you have to stay home due childcare concerns, you know, school's being closed, or if you have to stay home because somebody in your family has been advised to stay home because of their serious underlying condition, then they can get up to 80 hours at two-thirds pay. Now, one thing in our policy is we're allowing people, if they want to, to close that gap using available PTO. But that's completely up to them. So that takes us over to the enhanced family medical leaveback portion. And as it stands right now, the only people that are eligible for that are folks that are staying home because their kids have to stay home. So what will happen is after, after they exhaust that emergency sick leave, there's a 10-day waiting period, I guess you would say. And then after that, they can receive up to 10 additional weeks of paid leave at two-thirds of their, of their normal salary. And I keep seeing more and more clarification on, on what they think that covers. And honestly, as things continue to escalate, I probably see that broadening that a little bit to encompass more people.
My last piece was 10 weeks.
Yeah, so, yeah, so FMLA is a 12-week benefit. So what they're doing is they're putting those first 10 days as unpaid. And then they will pay you up to, or we will pay them up to the 10 additional weeks. Now, one thing that I've run with the policy is if you have PTO, you can use it to cover that, that waiting period.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you, Rob. Well, with what they covered, something that I had to share, I will say, another COVID-related item is that you probably all are aware, all of us who are in the VDEM group are seeing parts, the equipment in the parks, the playgrounds in the parks, playboards in the parks, the tables, the seating areas, there should be signs on those. If you're using green space, missing air, want to get outside, walk around the parks all day long, you need to maintain social business.
you maintain the social distancing. But those items that people sit on and touch or use are playing on are closed because we don't want to spread any COVID-related diseases or bacteria on those areas. Another thing I'll mention, unrelated to, somewhat unrelated, primarily unrelated to COVID-19 is we're supposed to be doing the census right now. April 1st is Census Day. Obviously, we really are, it's very important that you participate in the census immediately. Funding for federal state sources for the next 10 years based on the population count here in the city less. So everyone who's not reporting, please report what your census status is and pay part of that. We're also working very carefully with the Census Bureau, with Washington Legion PMI to make sure all those students who are normally here, normally counted as our residents, are going to be accounted even though they're not clear counted. So that is a great sample of all these. But again, in good cooperation with universities and the Census Bureau, they place stopgap measures to try and get all those students counted. So an important thing that also all the great this critical time in COVID and slowing down the border crisis. And that's really all I have to say.
Any questions, Mr. Andrew? Here it is done. Thank you, Jim, and thank you for your good work and bringing the position experts is on different pieces. So you heard it.
Just briefly, this is due to the legal profession as much as it is to everyone else. So the local government attorney's forum is at Bull Year, trying to figure out the parameters of the advice to get municipalities. The ordinance and resolution that we're going to discuss later is a product of that group. And the idea essentially, I think, is that we all do this in a very similar way that no one is going to come back and say, "Well, you should do it that way because there's group protection." So that's mainly been our role, Larry and I's role, the past month or so, has been trying to figure out the best advice, both in terms of a longer-term scenario for how the legal side of the city continues to function, as well as year-to-year communication with Jim as individual scenarios come up, what the right way to address it is, what the limits or lack thereof of the city's power is in certain matters. And I think all of that is being discussed. Certainly, it's both one of the bright spots of the bright spirit nature of this, that it's certainly not lax to them, that it's certainly not the old defensive position. So there's a lot of good cooperation, I think, along on to make sure that municipalities are all situated on the same page. Our brief specific notes, you haven't heard, the courts are almost completely shut down other than critical criminal matters, on hearings, that sort of thing. Civil cases are almost completely unadapted other than emergency child removals, emergency adult protective services, that kind of thing. So the city's lawsuit, the by title declaratory judgment, we were hoping to have an answer in the venue at this year of hostility at this point. The courts are closed until the end of April. All the decisions are, that's going to be extended. I would need to ask the governor's order June 10th, the next time this record is together. So it's hard to tell at this point when we'll have any resolution to that. I would say all is semi-absolutely true, Liz, Jim, it's... I would say all is semi-absolutely true because there's going to be a huge battle on the cases once, or soon reopen. And it's just going to be a matter of trying to do as much as we can. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. But to affirm, courts are closed currently in August, sorry, May, and April.
Not the last Friday, April 4th, it's April 26th or whatever that last Friday is.
Thank you. Under due diligence, there's the approval or consideration of the emergency declaration and ordinance. Or there's documents, the resolution confirming the emergency declaration and the ordinance provided continuity of governance. There's a link in your packet for your review ahead of time. And I would ask for your consideration of those. Recommendation is to approve the resolution ordinance that's presented.
I'm going to approve the resolution confirming emergency declaration and the ordinance for the continuity of governance.
Right. I will motion a second. Thank you all very much. Any discussion? Just to point out that this will apply to all agencies within the city, U.P., Commission, ARP, et cetera.
Yeah, the principal effect of the ordinance is that going forward, city council as well as all the other board's commissions. Groups can be electronically, which currently, as we sit here tonight, we can't, on the sake of till ordinance like this passed. The good news is the other organizations don't have to be physically to pass the resolution. They merely first with their business on a conference call, or resume, or whatever device is used, they'll pass a resolution confirming that they're going to follow these procedures at city council that I'm having tonight because they're first with their business, and from then on, just carry on a business meeting as a general application.
Since it does identify regional boards, do the regional boards, when they acknowledge that they're going to follow this, conduct electronic meetings, like for example, RAR, we need to acknowledge, and we need to have had more supervisors that acknowledge that they also allow electronic meetings. And if you're just in two, since we're, they have all three of the counties.
That's ideal, and certainly I believe the plan is for everyone to basically pass this same resolution, the same ordinance, and for, so the question will be the timing, I think, in a lot of ways. But my reading of both the ordinance and the GAT, the Attorney General's GAT, is that if one of the localities has allowed it, they reach a board, because it specifically says, any organization that we're employing books to can follow these procedures. I think the answer would be, for example, say, lax to the best of the priorities, maybe has it. Is that the resolution? Can we say we're going to follow the procedures without, by lax to the city council?
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions or discussion? I have a motion, second.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have a copy of that resolution. Your organizations would have to pass, pass it out to you. So if you are sitting on one of those entities, you can provide it. I can also provide it electronically if you need anyone who needs that. So yeah, that is a template that adds, you know, insert name here kind of thing. So the electronic version is probably going to be more useful to adapt to each individual organization's needs. If there's any questions on how that needs to be filled out for each individual organization, just let me know, we'd be happy to provide the guidance on that.
And then a important piece is this is allowed only during the time of the COVID-19 pandemic disaster declaration.
Correct. It needs to be reaffirmed after 60 days. Basically, just a reminder, one, so I think, high advice for each going forward at every meeting. We reaffirm this ordinance, but in no event will it extend beyond six months. And that's the emergency declaration, hopefully, I'm sorry, the emergency ordinance in no event effective for a maximum of six months. Hopefully, this will all be behind this, that's purported that at least will be behind this in six months. But in terms of that, we can readjust a new ordinance in a period of six months to allow us to continue to be electronic. I will just say, there is a specific paragraph that says this is not requiring electronic meetings. If for whatever reason we decide that we do want to be physically at any time, we can do that without revealing or in any way changing this ordinance or changing our ability to go back to electronic meetings after that physical meeting. But I believe the result at this point is until we decide differently going forward, all meetings will be electronic.
Thank you very much. Very good question, a positive question. A favorable approval that's presented, it's in progress, aye, this heads. Michelle, you still with us?
She's still there. Michelle?
Yes. What did you say?
You voted the approval for consideration of the ordinance?
Yes, it's fine. Are we voting? It's a little hard for me to hear, so it's echoing, and I'm sorry.
No problem. We actually have the yes for approval, that works.
Yes, I...
Very good.
And I can't hear you, really. So what?
You voted yes to the ordinance confirming the emergency declaration and to hold electronic meetings.
Yes. I didn't hear the motion or the second, so I'm sorry. Yes.
Unique circumstances of technology and, for many reasons, it's great to be all three together. But sorry that you're not here, Michelle, and look forward to when we can all be together in good health and making progress. Anyone else have?
Yes.
Another meeting, we go up there, Jerry?
Yeah, there's no, I don't think there's any question that the city can, basically, put a word warning on a lot of the penalties of interest for yields of lodging tax. Question of whether or not you can actually forgive the tax. But I think there's two separate issues. So there's no question that you can delay, and some municipalities are to pass, basically saying, I'm sorry, from March 1st to May 31st, city is not going to impose any penalties for interest on taxes that aren't paid during that period. But at the end of the period, through a lunar April, this is lifted, that those, any taxes unpaid will be subject to penalties. So it is giving our restaurant tours and lodging facilities as much of a break, I think, as we can under the current code, but that would require ordinance to... Too long for that belief. And the question is, if we want to do this, I would, if we're to use your, we could say that if we're going to pass it at the next meeting, if you want to actually see the wording, how that's phrased. But I don't think there's any question that we can make it retroactive to March 1st. I don't think there are any to do appropriate for March 1st through, I think, May 31st, probably after today. For now, we can always extend.
I would certainly discourage council from putting up ordinance that we haven't seen and give some more to me to it. But there were a variety of business owners that contacted City Hall and myself as well. As Jim chaired everyone, the information from Stan in Virginia, that passed that and a couple of other provisions. No, we're all hurting in tough situations and with penalties and interest on the yields of lodging tax is one way we can show some sympathy or outreach to the businesses. We all understand from the great education of our commission of revenue that if a trustee passes a law tax and is there, it would still necessitate the businesses to file their, they reported their taxes, but perhaps if they didn't pay it, it would be a period of time before, with no penalty and no interest, or with, presumably, they would still need to pay it. There's no question about that. I would say, anyone wants to chime in with opinion or a preference or direct staff to work towards that? We could talk about something like that at the same meeting.
I think it's important for us to support our businesses as much as we can because they have heard it right now, and they are still trying to support us as a community. So I think this is the least we can do.
I might also, Mayor Council, that this is not a substantial amount of revenue for the city. This is not revenue that we budgeted and hold to and never collect. So we're not losing anything by not charging that interest for these fines. So it'll be an insatiable amount of money and it will really help our businesses stay with us as we pull out of this, so that they can help me from contributing and continue to contribute to the community. We all need to have a good, that way.
Rather than wait a month, or wait two weeks to go to the next meeting, I'm just wondering if we are going to go with the road or if somebody has some things to give people services in the next two weeks, yes, that we're going to do this rather than just talk about it. You know, I feel like we can live to be assured if we've been here for both of this. I would suggest that you're supporting the concept, could make a motion to the direct staff to work towards that. If there's not consensus for ordinance or more to support that, then businesses would have some direction, and staff certainly have their direction. Well, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused here. Jared, you said an emergency order item. So would we could pass anything that might that would actually stand in as an emergency order?
I completely could. Question is whether or not it's a good idea. And practically, I don't think it would ultimately have an effect because we can't make it retroactive. So I think the mayor's position for, and the nation is, if there is a vote on a motion to direct staff to draw ordinance to presenting council at the next meeting, I think most votes would...
In reference, moratorium until May 31st. About, I would say, recommendation from staff or recommendations? I have a motion and a second. Michelle, you with me?
Yeah, I hear you. I can't hear you all now. It's, the sound is going in and out, so...
I think the idea is not knowing how this is going to go is if we get to, first, what A, we need to, as I mentioned, I think the only question is to start, A, or R, I think that's general consensus.
I just want to make sure Michelle is with us. I can't see her. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing an escrow call, Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Saber?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Senn?
Aye.
Excellent. Michigan area is the end of 66, we're out. Thank you to Mayor for bringing that up, very appreciative of that. Anybody else with other thoughts?
Briefly, since the, there's anyone listening at home that, you know, that can't see you're supporting this effort, like, I think it's worth acknowledging that our, Nathan Strong's here helping us, Gary Swink did a great job with the work session, always on the budget, Robbie Bailey's supporting this effort, Chief Lee Smart, Riley, and Chief Dickerson's here, Jamie Hoster making us all run it, let the public, if they're listening to be aware of that. And then I also just want to share some, since I, you know, that guy, you know, a first grader, sixth grader that are now out of school, and I think my kids are very similar to all of our city schoolchildren that are very valuable constituents and that we care about very much here in the city, and they're at home, or they're, you know, paying their grandparents or whatever, their parents are working, but, you know, kids are bouncing off the walls. I just want to share my appreciation of our teachers, our educators, we're continuing to make contact with our kids in non-traditional ways, whether it be, you know, via social media, to be quite honest, or providing feedback electronically through Google classroom at the middle school, but these kids are using it now, you know, my kids are so far past me in their technology, but the teachers are the ones that are driving this, supporting my team, and we're getting emails from the school administrators that remind us, in the school spirit, just because you're not in school doesn't mean that you can't put on your favorite sports team shirt or hat, have your parents take a picture of it and send it to your, to your principal or your school teacher. I mean, this is the way of staying connected, and I would say that my first grader today did a face-to-face meeting with some of her classmates, my first grader did that for 30 minutes, and my sixth grader's been doing two meetings with her friends and her classmates, and then feedback from teachers on writing assignments and so on, so it's, learning is still happening, and I just really credit our teachers or our administrators for pushing that out there to our kids that really need it and are missing it. So I just, you know, some of our kids are the ones that would say they never, you know, they don't like to go early in their school, but let me tell you what, they miss school, and they miss their teachers and their friends.
I've heard about several stories from colleagues at work, children who were crying when their parents told them that they couldn't go to school, so I would have attacked them when I was a youngster, but our children certainly are featuring the tools available to them and the structure of the terrific teachers. So thank you for the presentation, David, uplifts all, folks who like us in our staff and school, all the great work. Anything else? Again, thank you all for being here, staff, great job, and we'll just think about the next meeting. Your turn.
Thank you.